Terrible this year. My college team's NC State.
Of course.
Yeah. My baseball team's the Padres.
Okay.
Similarly, when I lived there all those years.
Welcome to the Smithfield Town Council 2024 Candidate Forum. My name is Steve Stewart. I'm publisher of the Smithfield Times and proud to be your moderator tonight. Thank y'all for coming out. I just got the thumbs up that our livestream is rolling. I want to thank the town of Smithfield on two counts. One is the use of this beautiful facility.
This is for our town.
Y'all, that could be a problem at some point before the night's over. And then secondly, use of livestreaming, so we are live on the town's Facebook page. The town didn't have to do that, y'all.
Really nice of the town to do that. My mic is out of here.
We, things look like we're going to work on some replacement batteries or something. Y'all bear with me on that. Our rules tonight, so each candidate, by order of random drawing, before we got started, will get two minutes to give an opening statement. Then we're going to go into our questions and answers. Each candidate will be given up to, and I emphasize up to, three minutes to respond to each question. And y'all, that's a long time as it goes. I did that discussion tonight and not sound bites. That's longer than Trump and Harris got, three minutes. I hope that leads to good discussion, although I told them, don't use your three minutes for the sake of using all three minutes because it will limit the number of questions we get in, right? If everybody took three minutes on every question, we'd get about five questions. And we got some great questions that were submitted by citizens. That's going to be the way we do it. They'll rotate the order of their responses. And then, at the end, we did yet another random drawing to determine the order of closing responses. So with that all said, we are going to get started. The first opening statement of the night will be from incumbent councilman Raynard Gibbs.
First, I give an honor to God, who is the head of my life, to all of these fine candidates that sit on this panel with me, and to the citizens that showed up today. Who am I? My name is Raynard Gibbs. I was born in Cuba, Alabama, small town, population of 346. When I left, there's 345. I'm married to Gloria Gibbs, my lovely wife. I have two daughters, Nisha and Simone. Nisha's currently a JAG officer in the United States Air Force, and my daughter Simone is a 2L at Washington and Lee. You guys pray for her. I'm a retired Navy officer. I'm an assistant pastor. I'm a small business owner. Most of all, I care about this community. In 1998, we joined a church over in this area, and we loved the small-town charm. I convinced my wife to draw downtown Smithfield, and it felt just like I was in Cuba, Alabama. I was like, I am home. But I couldn't convince my wife, a city girl, to move here. I got one minute. So, I got to wrap it up real quick. Transparency. I pledge to be transparent on town council and in all of my dealings. Historic preservation. I love the small-town charm here. For those that say I'm about big growth, that's not true. I love what we have here. I just think it could be better. Fiscal responsibility. I pledge to treat your money, manage your money with integrity, truth, and sincerity. That's who I am.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Our next opening statement will come from candidate Bill Harris.
Good evening, all. My name is Bill Harris. I'm running for town council for a number of reasons. My wife and I and our son, who's now in Charleston, South Carolina, moved here about 30 years ago onto Gray Street. We had the pleasure, the honor, and the task, I guess, of reconditioning two of the historic homes on Gray Street. I'm an historian by training and by vocation and avocation, and I really believe that one of the things that we must do a better job of, from council on down, is protecting the historic sites here and the historic nature of our small town. It's very, very important to me. I also believe that fellows like me that are stepping in are doing so because we have seen a town council, several town councils, operate as reactive rather than proactive. I would like to sit on council and help council and our citizens get out ahead of some things so that we're always not trying to catch up. I'm a fiscal conservative. I believe that the money that is collected by the taxpayers should be spent to benefit the taxpayers and should never be used to enhance the profits of any private development. I am also a consensus builder, and I would like to lend that voice and those ears to all the other folks that are on council so that we can come up with collective decisions and not one, two, or three that are arbitrary. Thank you. I look forward to speaking with you on other issues as the evening progresses.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. The next opening statement will come from candidate Mary Ellen Bibermeyer.
Hi, good evening. Mary Ellen Bibermeyer, and I decided to run for town council because I was concerned about the excess of growth that was happening in Smithfield. I've lived here for about 22 years. My husband and I have raised our five children here. So I'm a wife, a mother, and a concerned citizen. So I'm like many of you. I'm just concerned about what's going on in Smithfield. I started attending meetings a number of years ago, and I thought, I can't complain if I'm not willing to do something about it. So that's why I decided to run. I'm concerned about these high-density housing developments that have contributed to the traffic problems in and around town. I'm concerned about how they affect the fire, police, rescue, schools, all that. We know that growth is going to happen, but the density of these housing developments is killing us. And I hear that when I talk to people all over town, that they don't like the traffic, they don't like all the extra houses. So I am in favor of small targeted commercial developments that will bring goods and services to the town, jobs, restaurants, shopping, that sort of thing. I'm a supporter of small businesses. I think we have a great entrepreneurial spirit here in Smithfield, and we need to build on that. We need to make sure that they have easy-to-understand regulations and not extra costs that affect their businesses. I'm committed to greater openness and transparency in the town council, and I believe that the current council has not had that. I want citizen feedback. I've been doing a lot of meet-and-greets around town, and I'm consider, I will continue to do that if I'm elected to town council. I think the citizens need to be heard and listened to and not ignored. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bibermeyer. Our next opening statement will come from candidate Darren Cutler.
Good evening, citizens of Smithfield. It's really great to see so many people out here, and I thank you to those watching from home as well. Also like to thank the town for the venue and Smithfield Times for being our gracious hosts. So I'm Darren Cutler. I'm running for town council. And, you know, I'm not from here. I've been here for about two years. But I was born and raised in a similar small town, Mount Airy, North Carolina. Most of you probably know it. It's Mayberry, from the Andy Griffith Show, so you're probably familiar with it. A town with similar small-town vibes and charm and much like Smithfield. And that's how I landed here in my forever home to retire to. Now, when I left Mount Airy, I went into the United States Navy, where I served for just over 24 years as a machinist mate, submarine officer, and a diagnostic medical physicist. I studied engineering at North Carolina State University, physics at San Diego State University, and I'm a residency-trained diagnostic medical physicist, and I now practice throughout the Tidewater area. Politically, though, I think it's time for a change. It is time for us to reclaim the town council for the citizens. I'd like to see the town council get back in touch with the citizens, communicate openly. When the citizens speak, the council responds, not goes immediately to a vote. I'd like to see more fiscal responsibility, specifically no public-private partnership with wealthy developers. Additionally, I vow to be the speed bump to mismanaged growth. This growth that stresses our emergency services, fills our schools, and overflows our roadways. Additionally, I have no personal or business relationships in the town that will hinder or influence my vote. Thank you all for coming out, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Our next opening statement will come from incumbent councilman Michael Smith.
Thank you. I'm Mike Smith. I've lived in Smithfield off and on for too many years. I don't want to say what year it was. You didn't know how old I am then. So, what I am concerned about is, and I have been on council for 12 years, and what I'm concerned about is the growth that is happening right now. When I was growing up in Smithfield, it was 3,500 people a year. And now we're facing almost 9,000. Projected growth in the future is 1,811 homes in the next 20 years, with the 1,400 homes that we already have that have been approved. That's going to carry us way over of any number of 1,800, more like 3,500, if you do the average home of 2.5 per person. So, in less than half of the 20 years, we're already faced with a double growth, almost a triple growth that we cannot sustain. It gives us 10 more years to add more homes, more people on the streets. It's just out of control at this point in time in my belief. I want to see it slowed down. We rush into things, I think, sometimes on council. We don't really give it good enough thoughts. We're not listening to the people here in the town, and many times when we do, it falls on deaf ears. And I have been really pleased that people are involved now, the citizens are expecting more from us. I encourage y'all to continue to do that. I thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Our final opening statement will come from incumbent councilman Jim Collins.
Best for last. Thank you so much for coming out this evening. I'll take a minute just to introduce myself a little bit and then tell why I am running for council again. My name is Jim Collins, and I'm originally from Virginia, been married for 38 years. My wife, Annette, and I have three children, four grandchildren, and I listed in the Navy Seabees when I was 17 years old. Then went and got, after 21 years, retired as a naval Civil Engineer Corps officer. I have engineering degrees from Virginia Tech, MIT, and I'm a professional engineer in the state of Virginia. When I retired in 2005, I opened up a general contracting company and an engineering design firm, where we did projects up and down the East Coast, primarily for the Department of Veteran Affairs Medical Centers. The reason I'm running is I want to be involved. My wife and I traveled around quite a bit, never really had an opportunity to get into our communities very much, and once we moved here, we really got into the fabric of everything. I know my experience and perspective brings a fresh set of eyes to look and a fresh set of ears to hear the needs of Smithfield. Once we moved here, we really did start getting into everything where I served on, this is a long title, Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, Transportation Planning Office Community Advisory Committee, where I learned a lot about the region. And since then, I've been involved in the Isle of Wight Economic Development Authority and then obviously served on town council. In my short time on council, I've been learning and spending my time on safety and the financial status of our town. I'm currently serving as a safety committee chair, which the first responders are awesome. They've helped me to get acclimated and learned quite a bit. I'm financially conservative and believe that the increase, the topic of increased taxes is not how you start any conversation. Our town is quite well financially set, and I would love to be involved to make sure that continues into the future. I would sincerely appreciate your vote to ensure that all of Smithfield is heard in upcoming council conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Before we get into Q and A, audience, are you hearing the candidates good? Is there any candidate that you need to be a little louder?
Was I too low?
Mr. Collins, a little louder. Okay. So, candidates, remember, get right in that microphone.
Do I need to do mine over?
Oh, one sure. Good try. Okay, very good. We're going to jump right into questions and answers. Alliances are a prominent feature of this election. Four of you have been endorsed as a slate by a new political action committee that has formed in town. Mr. Gibbs and Mr. Collins, you were endorsed by Mayor Bowman, have made many joint appearances together during the campaign. The question is, how will you balance obligations to any alliances that you are part of with your duty to be an independent thinker and to always act in the best interest of citizens? We're going to start with Ms. Bibermeyer.
Thank you. I appreciate, yes, I have been endorsed by the Citizens for Responsible Leadership. I appreciate their endorsement. They stand for openness and transparency, which I, of course, believe wholeheartedly in. I think even though there are four of us that have been running together, we do have different opinions on things, but we all have the goal of representing Smithfield. And as we talk to different people in different neighborhoods, different meet-and-greets, I think that's the importance, is making sure that everybody has their voice heard, and that's what I'm committed to. And that's what I think the four of us, when we have talked in the past, are committed to as well. We want more citizen involvement. Also, controlling the growth, that's huge. And I think in order to make a change on the council, we need to have people that are like-minded that way. That doesn't mean we're not going to, we're going to agree on some issues, we're going to disagree on other issues, but I think it's important that the citizens are hearing, are being heard, and that we're listening to them, we're responding to them. So often, I've been speaking at town council meetings the last couple of years, and I've said my piece, and it's just next. So I think we need to have more dialogue with citizens, and I'm not afraid to say that, and I think that's important. And from a person that has been on the other side, I can tell you, I have not felt listened to. And that is what I'm committed to doing, is listening to citizens and doing what they want. And it's not about me. It's about what's best for the town, keeping our small-town charm. We can't keep building and building if we're going to have, if we're going to keep on, keep on voting for, you know, the housing thing. But I am, I'm an independent thinker. I'm not allied with anyone, and I think that's important for people to know.
Thank you, Mrs. Bibermeyer. Mr. Collins, we're going to come, by the way, straight down the road toward me. If any candidate, if you need me to repeat the question, and this carries throughout the night, just let me know, I will. I know it's a long time if you're the last person to answer, right? So I'm happy to repeat the question. Mr. Collins.
Thank you. Alliances. Yeah, I agree. The other four up here, they have a known connection through that organization. I have no alliances. Just because I have a support of some very dear friends and giving some advice doesn't make an alliance or make me in debt to anybody. I think my short time on council, I've shown that I dig into questions. I'm able to understand things, and I do spend my time. When I approach a topic, I always ask what we're doing, why we're doing it, and then how we're doing it. And that's where I think a lot of this misnomer comes out about the town council and transparency and all these conversations that we're not doing certain things. Well, you can ask what we're doing and why we're doing it, but how are you going to do it? There is a key there of really how you're going to conquer that task. And that is a challenge on town council. It is different sitting up on the dais. I don't understand the conversation of, we don't listen. We listen. I mean, everyone listens. I don't get that. Community meetings, there's a little bit more of a dialogue, but once you get up to a town council meeting, you do listen to everybody, and if, you do come to town council with notions of things. I've never come to town council and had a decision in my head. I've listened to people. If there was things that made me question, then yes, I do ask questions, and I do, in my head, go back and try to figure it out. I know I'm allowed to postpone a vote, but the topics that I've been involved with really hasn't been there, that I needed to do that. I'll take my time with the discussion of growth. I'm not a growth, let's bring all kinds of things in here. I understand the comprehensive plan. I understand where the overlay district is. I understand where Smithfield wants to build and not build. I think that's something to follow. But at the same time, we throw around a lot about special-use permits. That's a tool. It's not a cudgel. That's a tool. And so that's a way for people to come in and say, look, your zoning ordinances are made a certain way, but they were written years ago, and we're going to try to change that. Or, I'm sorry, and we're going to try to fit into that. But where we don't, the special-use permits are a stopgap that makes them ask questions and makes them come to, makes the town council for a decision. And I think all that is beneficial. But I'm not one for huge growth. I want to keep Smithfield as it is, as far as character, but there are always ways to improve, always ways to improve.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Cutler.
So, I ran for council. When I moved here, I got observant of the town and the politics. And through many discussions with Mike Smith and others in the town, I quickly began to see some of the issues that citizens were complaining about. Not only did I hear the complaints, but then I recognized them myself. Mike and I had a discussion, and, you know, he recommended that I consider running for council. And I knew it was something I wanted to do, but I didn't really know that my opportunity to effect change may come so soon. So I set out to get my signatures, walk in the streets alone, knocking on doors, and, you know, one Sunday, you might spend six hours, and you might get six signatures because people have so much to say. And that was probably the best part thus far of the campaign, is connecting with citizens. I was very fortunate, as this progressed, to be introduced to the Citizens for Responsible Leadership. It's far from an alliance. They appreciate, as the candidates do, the differences among us. We may have some common goals, but we have different approaches about the ways to get there. And so it's not something that we have an alliance after, in the event that we are elected, but that our goals for preserving the town, for transparency, and citizen involvement are similar. As I said in my introduction, it's time to reclaim the council for the citizens. It is time for change. Mike, Smith, and Jeff Brooks can't do it alone. If you look at the makeup of the council over the last several years, you will see that five yes votes, two no votes consistently. We can't run as an individual and wind up with four yes votes and three no votes and affect a change that the citizens want. So it is necessary for us to come out and have multiple candidates. And you see that we have a variety of candidates because citizens have seen enough. They've had enough. They're fed up with the explosive growth that's taking place and the lack of transparency and responsiveness to citizen comments. So, it's not an alliance. It is the required effort that it takes to make a change in the voting numbers on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Mr. Gibbs.
So, when I look at the Citizens for Responsible Leadership, they have formed an alliance. And we talk about transparency. I find transparency really strange. When Mr. Collins and I asked to be a part of the group, of the meeting, and we were denied because of our affiliation, I find that really strange. I worked with Mr. Collins, Mayor Bowman, Ms. Roundtree, Vice Mayor Butler. I support Jim. I consider Jim a friend, but I don't have an alliance with Jim. My alliance is to the citizens of Smithfield. That's all of Smithfield. Jersey Park, Church Manor, Historic District, Cypress Creek. That's who my alliance is with, the citizens of Smithfield. And I promise to serve you honestly, with transparency, with integrity. And not like some, I invite you to the table, and I prepare the meal.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Steve, for the question. To suggest that the Citizens for Responsible Leadership has built an alliance really kind of misses the point about that organization as well as the Candidates Association with that. When I decided to run, I was approached by a group that said, what do you stand for? And I said, well, transparency, fiscal responsibility, a more civil tone, better recognition of citizen input and reaction to citizen input. And the members of that organization said, you know what, these are the type of things that we would like to see as well. Would it be okay if we backed you in terms of promoting your candidacy and helping you to finance certain things that need to be financed? To suggest that the four of us will work in lockstep is to deny everything that has been printed in the newspaper and any of the video reports, or any of the comments any of us have made at meet-and-greets, time and time again. And to suggest that coming forward to want to join an organization that you have attacked implicitly and have held positions quite differently than ours is simply a bit disingenuous. An alliance is a group that links together, does together, and acts together. I can assure you that the four of us are independent-minded. We bring different approaches. We have different concerns. But our concern, overall concern, is doing the very best we can to redirect the actions of town council so that those actions do a better job of benefiting the citizens of the town of Smithfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Smith.
Thank you for the question. As I said earlier, I've been on council for 12 years, and each time that I ran, I would get on the street, start knocking on doors, and the only time I ever really got to be involved with the citizens directly was by asking them to sign my petition. It was sort of cut and dry. You just threw your name in the hat, and all of a sudden, you ran for council. There was no discussion, no involvement with the community. And this CRL has brought a new light to the citizen involvement, wanting to recognize what they want to see done in this town. I'm honored that they have endorsed me, and I have the same concerns that everyone else has. We don't think alike all the time, but we do have a common goal. It's important to me that we involve the citizens, and I want to continue to do that on a regular basis. I want to listen to them better at council meetings, and I want to take our time. When I first went to, let's call it a boot camp for new council people, the biggest thing I came away from there with was, take your time. Don't rush your decisions. And I do believe that, and I feel like we've not done that. We haven't taken our time. I like to think that the citizens are a third eye, and I like another eye on our decisions sometimes. Because you can bring something up, and I can say, well, gosh, I never thought about that. And it came from the citizens, and it came from how they felt about the situation we're dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you all. Question from the audience. All six of you live in the two most affluent areas of Smithfield. I'm thinking through that. That'd be Cypress Creek and the Historic District. I never really thought about it that way, but maybe that's true, the two most affluent neighborhoods in Smithfield. So the question is, what will you do, given that all of you live in the affluent areas of town, what will you do to ensure that all citizens are represented? We're going to start with Mr. Collins.
Very good question. That's good. Because that's one thing that's been bothering me as well, as far as the CRL chose their candidates, and maybe there's not an alliance if you want to go down that road, but they only chose four candidates that live in the Historic District, which is, Historic District is seven tenths of a square mile of what is Smithfield. There's 10.1 square miles, so 93% of the square area is outside the Historic District. Historic District is very critical. But there's other people that, outside of that area. So having four from that area is, I think, is not the best choice. Town Council next year will have three members from the Historic District, no matter what. That's going to happen. Hopefully, Ray and I will go, will get reelected, and then we will support people in other areas. Hopefully Ray and I will get reelected, and then we will support people in other areas. Just popped in my head, Ray's trying to teach me to stop being an engineer so much, so Ray, I support you too, and I consider him his friend, and we work well together. I just don't do some of that, I'm just engineered by the number. And how am I going to, and so going back to the question, how am I going to do that? I've been around town, meeting a lot of people, and all over the town. It's been all sides. It doesn't matter about your race, your creed, your religion, whatever. I've been talking to everybody, trying to understand, you know, what are the needs, what are the requirements, what are the concerns? One of them is representation, and it's a matter of, well, who's coming to represent the town? So I commend everybody up here for wanting to do that, but I think we do need a wider representation around Smithfield. I've talked to some people in other areas to see if they wanted to, you know, to try. They just, people just don't want to be battered. I mean, to make it simply, they just don't want to be beat up. They just, they want to do what's right for the town and not be totally misunderstood or misrepresented in ways that things do. So I think one way to do it is, like I've been trying to do, is go out to meet as many people as I can and talk to them and try to understand where they're coming from.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Cutler.
That's a great question. Thank you, Mr. Stewart, for that. So, a wonderful thing about the Citizens for Responsible Leadership and the connection that we have formed is that we have held meet and greets with neighborhoods throughout the town. We've had crowds from 25 citizens to two, and we have spent all of our time, two hours or more at these meet and greets, answering and responding to every question and concern they have. So I would not suspect that location plays a factor, whether it's the Historic District or Cypress Creek. We have made the effort, and will continue to, make the effort to connect with citizens and hear their issues and respond to them. I knocked on every door in Jersey Park and spoke to every citizen that would answer or walk through the park, just the same as their concerns, and they did not feel heard. They did not feel represented by the town council. But that is what we have done, is gotten out into the community to hear the issues and be prepared to respond to them. Mary Ellen and I both did that. We campaigned at the Dollar Tree so we could get citizens from all over the town, and so that we could hear, even from citizens that did not live in Smithfield. We still took the time to listen to their concerns because we affect, the decisions that the town council makes don't only affect the town, but they affect the surrounding area. I think there's great opportunities for anyone to run in the council, to run for the council. And I would say to critics, to take a note from Theodore Roosevelt when it comes to criticizing the man in the ring. It's a very challenging thing, it's taken an immense amount of effort, and I appreciate all six of us and the efforts that we put forth to go on this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Mr. Gibbs.
So someone said this to me, said, you were moved here, not a born here. Yeah, I moved here. I moved to Cypress Creek, which is considered an affluent area, if you want to consider that an affluent area. But those hardworking citizens that live in Cypress Creek, that pay taxes and they love Smithfield as well as I do. When you talk about you're connected to Jersey Park and Church Manor, you're knocking on doors, until you sit down and counsel those kids and you spend time with them as your parishioners at your church, or you're taking food over there to families, or you're paying light bills, you can have a king status, but a servant's touch. The Bible says, let the greatest among you serve. And so that's what I plan to do on town council. I want to serve, serve the citizens of Jersey Park that I'm connected to, that I employ some of those same individuals in Jersey Park, as well as those individuals in Church Manor. One that comes to mind is Wayne. And so Wayne, I'm going to talk about it to you a little bit. Wayne had a habit. We won't say what his addiction was, but Wayne and I have spent many times, many long days together. And he said, Ray, why do you come pick me up every day? I said, because I believe in you. I said, I'm going to believe in you until you can believe in yourself. Today Wayne is a hardworking taxpayer citizen that lives in Church Manor. So you can live in Cypress Creek, you can live in the Historic District, just don't lose your common touch, and don't lose the voice of the people that elect you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Mr. Harris.
Thanks, Steve. I first heard the question, a lot of things went through my mind of interest. The first is, a little difficult for me to believe that downtown Historic District, which encompasses everything from Main Street all the way back to Riverview, can be considered one of the most affluent areas in Smithfield. That suggests that whoever took a look at those numbers only looked at one street and did not look at the neighbors that we have that go all the way back to the YMCA and back through the districts on either side of Riverview. Another difference, it seems, to pop out immediately is that the historic homes that now have value had virtually no value 25 years ago, when several of us moved into that street. Most of those houses were rentals. Five of them had exterior staircases that dropped out into the middle of yards because it was all rentals. The restructuring, the reclaiming, the refurbishing, the re-historicalizing, new word, that was done in those houses was done without any town monies, state money, or federal money. So if there is a particular high level there, it has been done on the backs of the people who lived there and restored those homes and gave Smithfield a walkable historic street. Representing everybody is something that all of us on this panel promised to do and should be doing. And a lot of us have been doing that ever since we moved to this street. I have been involved in all sorts of programs here in town. Board of Directors, Historic Smithfield, a trustee for Preservation Virginia, a non-paid tutor for high school and elementary children, a volunteer reader with elementary children, a volunteer coach here in Smithfield, a clinical instructor who provided clinical instruction in baseball for free, when I could have done it for anywhere $250 to $300 an hour as a Division One coach. To suggest that somebody's physical location in town is a limit on their ability to empathize and serve serves no one any purpose. And let me just remind everybody that it's sort of a goofy question to start with, because the candidates that represent Cypress Creek and downtown Historic Smithfield are the people who jumped in. You don't have a choice from other areas because the other areas chose not to represent, to stand as a candidate.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Steve. As I said, I've been in Smithfield a long time, and I've lived in a lot of neighborhoods. My dad loved building houses, so I got pushed around a lot. Regent Drive, Redpoint Heights, Battery Park, Rescue, and I've lived in four different houses in downtown Smithfield over the years. I'm not going to be punished for living in historic Smithfield. I consider it to be an honor. When I first ran, I was approached by people in town, not just from Historic District, but all over the town that I had grown up in, and asked me to run. So I consider it an absolute privilege to live where I live. And I'm not going to be, like I said, I'm not going to be punished for that. I think my decision to ask Darren Cutler to be on council, I did that because I recognized how smart he was, how intelligent he is, how caring he is. He's a family man, I know his children, and I respect that. And when I see goodness in a man, I want it brought out to the community. I'm not going to continue to be on council forever, and I want to make sure I can lay the ground with new blood that cares about Smithfield and wants to make a difference. And I think by being his friend is not going to punish me at all, it's going to enrich me.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Biebermeyer.
First of all, I'm not sure it matters so much where we live. I did live in Waterford Oaks for 18 years before I moved downtown, so I'm actually a relative newcomer to downtown, if that matters. Like I said, I don't think it really does. I have friends and family that live all over town, and the thing is, we all share the same concerns. We're concerned about traffic. I think the downtown area is sort of the canary in the coal mine, where the traffic on Church Street, Gray Street, Main Street has been, gotten worse over the last couple of years, even since I've been there, in the last four years. So, and I think other neighborhoods are starting to experience that more. So if those of us that live downtown have been speaking about it, I think by the time there is another town council election in two years or four years or whatever, we are going to see more people from other neighborhoods because people are sick of it. And I think we're the beginning part of it, but as we reach out to more people, reach out to more neighborhoods, we are going to have more people involved. I think this is just the beginning of change in Smithfield, and I'm happy to be part of it. I think when people see developments like Mallory Point and The Grange, they see how there's extra traffic along Battery Park Road, Church Street, Ben's Church Boulevard, everywhere. We all are facing that. So when we have people from The Villas and people from Church Square, people from Wellington, people along Smithfield Boulevard, Moonfield, Redpoint, I mean, you name it, Jersey Park. I mean, when we were down there at Jersey Park, people are concerned about traffic there too, just like they're concerned about traffic in Cypress Creek and Waterford Oaks. I mean, everywhere. So some of these issues transcend neighborhoods, and I think it's important to know that more people are getting involved, and I think it will spread to more neighborhoods, and I'm happy to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Biebermeyer. Next question, and Mr. Cutler, you will respond first on this one. Do you see the town councils vote in 2022 to pledge $1.4 million to a new farmer's market at The Grange at 10 Main as binding? If not, would you vote to spend that money if elected?
Can you repeat the last part of that?
If you don't see the 2022 vote as binding, if asked after you are elected, would you vote to spend that money?
So first, I do not agree with moving our award-winning and wonderful farmer's market to The Grange. I will not vote to spend $1.4 million on that. I will not vote to match $6 million that requires us to move to The Grange. I do not support it. We have a wonderful farmer's market that the town loves. When I moved to Smithfield from downtown Norfolk, I told some friends, I'm moving to Smithfield, I love it there, and they were like, oh, my gosh, we love it there too, we go there all the time, the farmer's market is the best thing all summer long. I was like, and then I kept hearing that from people in the Norfolk area, Portsmouth area, Virginia Beach. So we have an established and wonderful asset in our farmer's market. It supports our local businesses, and is award-winning. You don't fix what's broken. I would say there was an article that came out recently from the Smithfield Times, and I think Councilman Collins was quoted on there as part of the Economic Development Authority, that the check's not written, or that the other count, the other member's attorney said the check's not written, that we are not committed to paying that. We made a commitment, but we did not write the check. So I would reverse that commitment. I would support reversing that commitment and keeping our farmer's market where it's at and where it belongs.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Mr. Gibbs.
I personally support relocating the farmer's market to The Grange at 10. However, this is just my personal viewpoint while serving on the planning commission. I received feedback from the citizens expressing concern about the potential traffic increase. A traffic study was done and showing that it wouldn't be a problem. To address the concerns, when you talk about the $1.4 million and how would I spend it, that's not a decision that I would make by myself. That's why we employ a town manager, a town council, to make that decision, a town treasurer. I pledge that I will be fiscal responsible with the town's money. So asking me, will I spend that $1.4 million, me personally, I wouldn't spend it. I will allow the town to make that decision.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. And just a point of clarification for you and others. The question is, would you vote to spend the $1.4 million? We're not asking if you would personally spend it. Would you vote to spend? That was the question.
I wouldn't vote to spend it.
Say again.
You said?
Would you vote to spend the $1.4 million on the farmer's market?
I will vote to be fiscal responsible with the money.
Okay. Mr. Harris.
No. That is not as direct as I could be. Elected to the council and sworn in, if that comes before me as something that needs to be reconsidered, I would oppose writing the check. I know that the previous town council has obligated it in principle. I believe that needs to be reexamined from virtually every direction. I do not believe it's necessary to move the farmer's market. There is way too much in the gray area about that particular move. Articles today suggest that the ownership of the farmer's market would actually become a tripartite ownership between the town, the county, and the county EDA. This is not something that's been discussed in public at town council. There's just too much here that needs to be decided upon before we even consider moving forward. But if the moving forward were to happen, dependent on my vote for the $1.4 million, that vote would be a resounding no.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Smith.
Thank you. This council that I was set on did make that decision to spend $1.4 in principle if it were to be moved. However, three years from now, things have changed. And I see the value of it being downtown where it is. The people frequent the shops while they go to the farmer's market, they eat at the eateries there. I see old and young alike. I see baby carriages, dogs, everything on Main Street, and it becomes a family unit downtown. And this is important to our small businesses in town, which I do support. It's vital that we have these businesses. They attract people from all over. I talk to people from Virginia Beach, Newport News, Hampton, Suffolk. They come in from everywhere on Saturday and enjoy not just the farmer's market, but they also enjoy the shops and the eateries. When this does come back up and we don't have a place for the farmer's market, that's going to have to be considered. But as of right now, my answer is no on spending $1.4 million.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Biebermeyer.
My answer is also no on spending $1.4 million. I think the farmer's market is in a great location, and if they, the people at The Grange, want something that draws people in, then they should be more creative, and they should come up with their own event or their own place to draw people in. Towns all over Hampton Roads, whether it's Virginia Beach, Newport News, Hampton, they all have what they call town center. We already have a town center. It's our downtown, two blocks from here. I don't see why we have to move the farmer's market six blocks away. It makes no sense. I think they're trying to recreate something, like these town centers in Newport News, Hampton, Virginia Beach, they're trying to create a downtown atmosphere. We already have that, and we capitalize on that. We have visitors, like Mike said, from all over that come to us. To spend $1.4 million of taxpayer money, usually when you have, what I've said is, if you have a private partner, excuse me, a public-private partnership, that usually costs the public too much money. So I am not in favor of spending the $1.4 million. If there is an issue with the farmer's market and the bank parking lot, that's kind of always the issue. Well, we don't know if that's going to happen, the lease is up. We have a downtown. We can close Main Street from Church Street to Mason Street or even up to Institute without affecting any residents on Main Street. The businesses are there, we've had markets there, we have those are there. We've had markets there. We have those two blocks where if we really want to have a farmers market, we can move it to the street, and for three hours a day. If it rains, they have had it here before. Honestly, it's not as much fun here because it is a lot more fun being outside. People bring their dogs, bring their kids, bring, you know, whatever. It's more fun to shop downtown than it is to wander around a building. So that's an easy answer for me. No to $1.4 million. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bibermeyer. Mr. Collins?
So if this doesn't show an alliance, I don't know what, what, what will. My understanding is the $1.4 million is committed, not obligated, because it has not gone through the financial channels, but I've been told that is committed. So to say no, I'm not sure we, we have the option. However, if we did, I would not say no. I would say yes. And here's the reason. We want to be transparent. We want to talk to citizens. We have four people who just said no to you. I have talked to the people that run the farmers market. They want a cover. They want protection from the weather. They want more bathrooms. They want better parking. They want more space. Well, that's the one we're talking about. It's not in the, in the back of a parking lot underneath of a tent. So the citizens want this. The other thing that, that was espoused is the EDA on how they're going to run it. I sit on the EDA. So these, again, when comments are made like this, it spins people up because they're kind of twisted a little bit. The EDA has, is a standalone body, non-political, that it's a tool for the county to use. It passes through financials. It owns property. It, it is a way to get things done and not get wrapped up in the bureaucracy. So the, so the EDA voted last night to say that we are open to the concept. We don't know the details, but we are open to the concept of ownership of the farmers market. All that means is money comes in, money goes out, we pay for everything. Someone else is going to be doing the maintenance, and that's going to be worked through the town and the county. But someone has to own this facility. The EDA is in a perfect spot. So we, we need to just be careful that, that people take half information and say certain things that it's just, understand the whole thing, spend time doing the research, and it'll, it'll be a lot better. But bottom line is, yes, I think I've, I've found out that the, the people want the farmers market down in a protected facility, and I think the, the money is committed, and if it is not, I will vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next question, and Mr. Gibbs, you will be the first to respond to this question. What changes, if any, should be made to the format of town council meetings?
Citizen comments. I think citizen comments should be interactive. The citizens should be allowed to comment, and, and we give them feedback at that very moment. Now, that's going to make for a long town council, but that's one of the changes that I would definitely want to see implemented, a back and forth between the citizens. Since when you have that, you have this thing transparency that everyone's talking about. You see it in action. In that way, you may get more involvement of, of your citizens when you have the interaction.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Mr. Harris?
I'd like to join Mr. Gibbs in that alliance.
There you go.
Which is something any of you who've been following town politics over the last four or five years know, that I would guess ten or twelve times I have addressed town council about this very issue. Democracy is a cumbersome activity, and as Mr. Smith said a little bit earlier, we are far too often in a rush to get things done. When certain groups of citizens and individuals say, we're looking for more transparency and more feedback, at the heart of that discussion is often the fact that when a citizen speaks, there is virtually no conversation between the members of town council, and then a vote is taken. What Mr. Gibbs just said is absolutely correct. Until, until town council figures out a way to engage, respond, and talk to the citizens and listen to what the citizens have to say, we will remain in a rut of distrust and discomfort in our town councils and our local governance. Does that mean we're going to have to have meetings that last more than one night, and decisions will have to be postponed until town council can digest what has been said? Probably. But it has to be done, folks. The folks that we have run into time and time again, all over town, believe that town council acts too often and too often disregard citizen input. That's what it looks like, and perception is reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Steve. Earlier, I spoke about the third eye, and I firmly believe the third eye is everyone sitting out here right now looking at council. What I really find strange sometimes is it only takes four votes to change the face of Smithfield without your permission. And that really does not sit well with me. Even if all seven had voted, it's still only seven people that have made that decision to go forth with something that the citizens don't want. We do need to take more time. When we hear these citizens come up and speak, it's the golden opportunity to look at that third eye and discuss what they said, and all of a sudden, we come up with the idea, well, wow, we didn't think about that. Let's, let's examine this a little closer. I've learned over years and years and years of working with people in construction, I can learn from a man that's dug a ditch. He knows what he's doing because I listened and watched him. So we can all learn from our citizens, and we can be led in the right direction with their, with their help. And that's why I want to see us take more time with our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Bibermeyer?
I also agree with more of a question and answer format at council meetings. Often there's, right now, there's just a public comment, and sometimes there are questions, and sometimes there are answers. But I don't know, you know, nobody, nobody can offer the answers. So I think it is good to have a dialogue back and forth. I also think it's a good idea if, if there, if the council members have more discussion when there are votes that are coming up. So people understand, often there are, we can, might have ten, twenty, thirty people speak on an issue, and then within a half an hour, there's a vote, two or three people. We have no idea why, why they voted a certain way. There's no explanation. So I think it is a good idea to slow the process down. We're not in a huge rush. And so if there are public comments, or if there's a certain hot button issue, it should not be handled at probably that same meeting. There probably shouldn't be a vote at that meeting. I think all these things need, need, people need time to understand the issues, council members and citizens as well. So there should be a dialogue back and forth, people learning from each other, understanding each other, where they're coming from. And I think the process needs to be, needs to be slowed down. So there's more interaction between citizens and council members than less. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bibermeyer. Mr. Collins?
I agree with you. Great ideas Ray, Ray presented. The, the comments, I, the back and forth. I've asked that several times. Why can't we go, go back and forth a little bit? Well, most of it is time. As, as, as far as most, a lot of that, and also delaying a vote after citizen comments, believe it or not, town council has, Vice Mayor Butler is here, she's actually brought that idea. We, we have, we have been talking about that. So it's not like it's, it's some sort of unknown thing that, that doesn't happen. Town council is trying to make sure that all are approved. But we also have to understand that you have a committee meeting, you talk about the topics that, that's coming to town council next month, then you have thirty days. And if you think that the council members are not going out talking to people, I'm sorry, that's just not true. I do. I go out and talk to people. I get opinions. And I, again, I won't, but I know Vice Mayor Butler, she's all over the place talking to people, getting opinions. So we do. We do go out there and try to get opinions. Then, then the, the people that, then we go, go to town council, and we get comments, and then I do agree, you know, is a vote needed that night? I, I know I'm allowed, I did ask him allowed to say, I was the reason the Times building was, was postponed, because there was something that was in, in the back of my crawl that, you know, let's, let's decide this. So we do take our time. It's not like we're, we're, we're being irresponsible in our seats. I think there's a, there's a, there's a notion in this, in this group here that, that there's, we're being irresponsible. No, we're not. We are taking our time. We are discussing with all citizens, not those, just those that come up. We love the opinions and decisions that, that, that come before town council. But there's also a lot of other people in town that have opinions and wants and desires. We go out and listen to as many people that are willing to come up and talk. So I would recommend, on top of what, what Mr. Gibbs said, is after committee meeting, come, come to committee meeting, listen. You're going to hear what's going on, on the upcoming agenda for next month. Call your council member, email them, reach out to them. I, I've stayed after, in fact, I think Mr. Cutler and I stayed after one, one meeting, and we discussed some, some items, because he brought some stuff and some questions, and, and he and I spoke about ten or fifteen minutes. Ms. Harris, we, we spoke about some stuff. It's just, it does happen. So this misnomer of it's not happening is just not true. So give us a little bit of credit that we're not just up there in a bubble making decisions that are incorrect. We're doing it for what the greater good of Smithfield is giving to us.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Cutler, any changes in the format of council meetings?
Yeah, I'll make a few points and then share a few experiences. First, I would change not voting without considering the citizens' concerns. When you have dozens of citizens voice their concerns, you don't converse with them, as both candidates on either side of me said they would like to see, and then you hold a vote, that is wrong and should be changed. Two, slowing things down. I would also agree with that. We seem, our town council seems to serve developers in a much more expedient manner than they do citizens. There's been concern for our postings in the Smithfield Times, even going as far as to consider changing them to another newspaper out of town, reducing transparency and reducing citizen knowledge on what's going on. So I would change those two things. Now, Councilman Gibbs, Councilman Collins both said back and forth. They have had a number of meetings and opportunities to do that. They have not done that. If they've discussed this change with Vice Mayor Butler, why has this change not occurred? There have been plenty of opportunities since their appointment to make a change. The only back and forth that I've experienced, actually two, two back and forths that I've experienced. The first was an incident where I spoke at the council about the $6 million question. It's not a donation. The interaction that I had was to be berated by the mayor. Not pleasant, for your citizens to feel that when they come to speak at the council, that that's what's going to happen. That does not encourage citizen engagement. Another experience, I spoke at the council about the release of information about that, which was public information. The only back and forth on the council was calling it a leak. A leak infers a secret. That was not a secret. It was public information. They expressed no concern, neither of the candidates on either side of me or anyone else on the council, about the citizens that were concerned that spoke that night. Finally, I, I spoke at the planning, at the committee meetings, and Randy Pack said, this is an informal meeting. Anybody can speak. So I did. Then I had another, another question later on the meeting. I raised my hand. Randy Pack signaled to me, yep, we'll get right to you. I raised my hand again, raised it high over and over again. I was never recognized by the mayor to speak. So those are my experiences with the current town council.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Can I just, let's do a lightning round. I think y'all can do this one in one minute each, because we are running out of time. We got some great questions we need to get to. One of the first acts, actions that you all will take, or the new council will take after being elected is election of a mayor for the next two years. So the question is, and we're going to start with Mr. Harris this time, will you vote to reelect Mayor Bowman, or will you vote for a change?
That's an interesting question, and one that you may be posing a little bit too early, until we know who every member of council is. I think that would be premature.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Smith?
Yes, I've thought about that myself. It's always, the ultimate decision is up to council. I was asked that the last time we ran. People asked me, are you ready to be mayor? I said, it's not up to me. It's up to town council to decide. Of course, I was not appointed to be mayor, but it didn't break my heart. Disappointed? Maybe so, but I stayed the course, and that's why I wanted to continue to be on council to see if we can make changes.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Bibermeyer?
I think we have a number of candidates, a, a number of town council members that would be excellent mayors, but I, I'm not committed one way or the other. I think it's too early to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bibermeyer. Mr. Collins?
I'll tell you when I get, get elected. But I do want to take my time with recent discussions with Vice Mayor. The reason no, no change has happened is because they're new. We're discussing things. It's, it's, it's moving along. So I'm learning. Everyone's learning. I'm asking questions. Everyone is. So nothing's been done because it was just, it was reason. You were not recognized at, at the town council meeting because it was out of order. You can raise your hand all you want. It was out of order. $6 million rated? Imagine being, being up on the dais, and you get fifteen people calling you a crook, saying you're trying to do something that is illegal to the town or in the town, and you haven't even, you haven't even taken a vote, and you were not going to take a vote that night. Nobody said, hey, is anybody going to take a vote? You could have stopped the whole conversation right then. So the, the, the mayor, and it was a leak, because the only reason I said it was a leak, because the mayor was going to explain it that night. And if everybody would have taken fifteen minutes and sat down and listened, he was going to explain what's going on. So it's not like something was in a back room. Nobody's in the same room all the time. He was going to take the time to, to explain it. But I'll tell you, when I get elected, you know who I'm going to vote for mayor?
Mr. Collins?
Excuse me, Mr. Cutler, sorry.
No, I would not vote for Mayor Bowman, simply for the lack of transparency that existed in this $6 million question. It was clear that citizens spoke that night with concerns about how they felt that took place. Even Vice Mayor Butler expressed concerns about how that took place. There was never any resolution as to how it took place. There's still more than $6 million in the town's bank account, sitting, collecting interest that belongs to the Luder family with no resolution. There's been no further details presented. So because of the evolution of that and the lack of transparency, I could not make that vote.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Mr. Gibbs?
I answered that question when elected, but I do want to address Mr. Cutler. There's parliamentary procedures that need to be followed. And before elected, if you're elected, please read Robert Rules of Order.
Okay, let's go to the next question. We're going to start with Mr. Smith on this one. If elected, how important would the advice of the Smithfield Planning Commission be to you as a member of town council, and under what circumstances would you vote against the advice of your planning commission?
I feel like we haven't engaged ourselves enough in guidance to the planning commission. And I say that because there's a, a process we go through of appointing people that, when they come off, and usually that is rotated amongst the council people. So the decision to find someone, very few people want to get involved in town council or even the planning commission. And I see this as being a big distrust amongst us, that we can't seem to heal right now for some reason. But I think if we decide we can do a better job of finding and seeking people out that want to be on public, public council, I think that this would make a great change in a direction that we can give them so that they can understand exactly what we're looking for when they bring something to our table. The other thing I would like to say, I'm sort of at a point where I don't want them to come and tell me we favorably approved this. I want to know the facts. Let us decide as council what's right or wrong.
Thank you, Ms. Bibermeyer.
I know the planning commission has kind of a thankless job. They're the ones that have to sort through all the rules and regulations for zoning, and gets not always the most fascinating topic. But they work very hard at it, and I appreciate their work. However, I, I think it is their, their opinion when something comes through, when, whether they approve things, dis, disprove, I would say they would, they have not, most things that come up by them, they have approved in terms of like housing developments or that sort of thing. So it's just passed along to the council. So I think- So I think it is the town council's position to be the last stop in the road. I don't think the planning commission's job is to make it easy for developers. Sometimes it seems that way, that that's what they do, but I know it is a hard job to do. So I would say it's an important job, but it's their opinion, they've sorted through that, but I think as council members, we have, we are, we answer to the citizens, to voters, and sometimes we have to disagree with the planning commission. And I'm ready to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Biebermeyer. Mr. Collins?
I believe the recommendation is very important. They look at the project that's in front of them from a zoning perspective, and they go through the zoning rules, and let me tell you, I've tried to do this, it is difficult. And they try to discern and try to identify the issues or what is with the zoning, and then they come up with the best solution. Their recommendation is just that, based on all their rules and regulations, that this project meets or doesn't meet zoning ordinances. The town council does not have the same viewpoint. The town council has to have a wider viewpoint of, does this fit? Does this meet the overall community needs? Understanding that town council did their homework and it meets the zoning needs, now it doesn't meet the greater good. But their recommendation to that is, and their homework that they do ahead of time is phenomenal. I mean, I think they do a really good job, but they, I think their recommendation is very important.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Cutler?
Thank you for the question. So parliamentary procedures, I got it. That was a committee meeting, not a council meeting. But back to the question at hand, so I don't think the planning commission is giving guidance. And I agree with the other council members, it's very difficult, thankless job perhaps. I don't think they're giving guidance, they're simply giving a recommendation. I think the council would be better served if they did give some guidance, some reasoning for their recommendations, why they think it makes Smithfield better, right? Because I believe the planning commission is missing the mark, unfortunately. And I think they need some guidance themselves, from the town council. I don't think that when the planning commission is presented for a special use permit that says, "I wanna decrease, increase the density from 12 homes to 10 homes," or in the case of Mallory Scott, when they say, "I wanna decrease the distance between homes from 24 to 17 homes." Do they ask why? I haven't witnessed that. What I've witnessed is the planning commission work with the developer to massage their special use permit, when what I would like to see them say is, "Developer, prove to me why approving your special use permit would make the town of Smithfield better." That's what I expect, not, "How can we maximize the density of your development so you can make more money while in tune damaging the charming nature of Smithfield?" So I think there's some room to grow there. And when I said there's some changes needed, that is certainly one of the areas where I believe change is necessary. So I would have no problem at all voting against the recommendations of the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Mr. Gibbs?
Committee meetings still, poll, parliamentary procedures. I've served on both planning commissions, and let me state emphatically, it is not a thankless job, and people to serve, I applaud them. So at the end of the day, it's just like Mr. Collins said, it is a recommendation. And all the times, the recommendation of the planning commission may not line up with the town council. And that's just something, if you're serving on the planning commission, you have to learn to accept that those, it's a recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Well, we all seem to be agreeing that what the planning commission does is provide recommendations to town council. Again, I've been very active as a citizen participant in meeting after meeting after meeting over the years, and I do not recall one time where town council has rejected the advice or recommendation on a major residential development at any time. Just prior to the final vote on the Grange, there was sort of a light flickering at the end of the tunnel. It was actually, a motion was actually put forth to send the eight special use permit back to planning commission for reevaluation, reanalysis. Planning commission did never, never got to see those again because a secondary motion was proposed to vote yes or no at that particular moment. That vote was three-two. Would I, sitting as a member of town council, listen to planning commission? Absolutely. I attend planning commission meetings as well. They work really hard. They are trying to juggle lots of balls. But ultimately, the decision for what is best for Smithfield, as Councilmember Collins mentioned a moment ago, ultimately lies with town council. Town council has to have the commitment to say no when no is the right answer.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Okay, candidates, let's do lightning round. I'm really trying to get in some more questions here. The time is flying by tonight. We're gonna start with Mr. Biebermeyer. Let's do one minute each on this one. State law and VDOT now give towns flexibility to reduce speed limits. The question is, what streets in Smithfield should have a lower speed limit, in your view?
I think there are probably a number of streets around town, but I think you also need to talk to the citizens of those particular areas. So getting citizen feedback is important. I mean, if I live on Grace Street, and I would say, a number of citizens there, we would say yes. I think it's, it would be a good idea to have lower speed limits on Grace Street, probably Main Street because of the pedestrians. But we need to talk to residents on Church Street, or Smithfield Boulevard, or Canterbury and Waterford Oaks. I think we talk to the citizens of those neighborhoods until we decide which streets need to be lowered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Biebermeyer. Mr. Collins, which street should have lower speed limits?
Yes, I agree. I don't have a map in front of me to go down the roads, but I actually asked for legislative change this year to increase that from 25 to 35, to give us a little more latitude to go into the 35 mile an hour streets and lower them as well. But I agree, there would be a lot of homework to go into that to figure out which actual streets we would wanna reduce.
Mr. Cutler?
I think this is a great opportunity for citizen engagement, that the people that are affected by the traffic on their roads where their children play and they wait for the school bus, that we could engage with them to see what the citizens would like. I think there is also already some citizen guidance being given in the comprehensive plan, that on the South Church Street corridor, that that section could be further developed and made into a walkable, bikeable area, but would warrant a speed limit reduction. So I think that with that law, the town council should make an effort to communicate with the citizens to get feedback to make a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Mr. Gibbs?
I agree with Mr. Cutler. There should be input from the citizens, but there should also be an in-depth traffic analysis done and use that to make recommendations on what streets should be changed.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Mr. Harris?
It looks like we're gonna have pretty close to consensus here. There is a significant number of studies out there that reduce speed, reduces accidents, reduces injury. We need to take a real hard look at these things. The comprehensive plan calling for more walkability, easier move about, you know, the more streets that we can get down in 25, the more golf carts, the less automobiles. But none of this can be done, none of it can be done, without significant input from our citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. When I first saw this legislation that allowed us to do this, it was just from 25. So you sort of think to yourself, "Well, 25 is already as slow as we can go, but we can go down to 15 or 20 or whatever." So it really didn't do anything for the 30 or 35 mile an hour neighborhoods at all. So yes, that's being looked at now, to maybe possibly raise that to 35 so we can start raising, lowering these speed limits on some of these roads. But I can tell you, I would like to see it definitely done on Main Street with all the traffic and people, walkability there, because 25 miles an hour with all the people that are in town, to me, is sort of dangerous.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Collins. Are you pleased with the town's current legal council? Why or why not?
Yes. I have no, I've had many discussions with Mr. Riddick. I, the year I've been there, I've seen nothing that has disparaged any opinion at all. Do I have three minutes on this one? Or is this a lightning round?
Lightning round.
Lightning round still?
We're running out of time.
Okay, all right. So no, I have nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Cutler?
So I don't know the town attorney that well. I will say that as I have spoken to citizens throughout the town through meet and greets and polling and campaigning, that he has a bit of a reputation as an eighth council member and interjects himself in a non-legal way. If elected to council, I would certainly entertain considering additional, or changing legal council. But I don't know him that well at this stage.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Mr. Gibbs?
I would retain Mr. Riddick as town council, as town attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Mr. Harris?
Again, an interesting question because there's an awful lot of chit-chat and you hear things pro and con. I don't think there's any question about the institutional knowledge or legal ability that our town attorney has. I do believe that some of the questions that have been raised about his behavior at town council and his interaction with citizens are worth looking into. But again, very similar to my response to the question about electing a mayor, personnel questions, not something that I think should be addressed unless you have all of the information at hand and sitting here and answering that in one minute. I don't believe I have the, everything at hand that I would need to give a definitive answer.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I've known Mr. Riddick for a long time. Him and my brother were great friends, and he's always had Smithfield's interest. But he's been there a long time now, and I know sooner or later, the decision will have to be made, that we'll have to seek counsel somewhere else or somebody else to take his place if he decides to retire or step down. So at this time, I feel like that it's available to be looked at if need be.
Mr. Biebermeyer?
I don't know Mr. Riddick personally, but he seems obviously a very knowledgeable, knowledgeable person regarding legal advice for the town, and I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr., excuse me, Ms. Biebermeyer. Okay, let's do another light, this is a fun question from a citizen. They say that Aldi's, I think that's a grocery store chain, has announced they're gonna build 600 new stores in the next 12 months. Should the Smithfield and the county recruit Aldi's to build a store here? Let's open up this up, it's kind of a fun question, cause I hear this all the time. People say, "We need a Chick-fil-A here." All right, so we're gonna open it up. What would you like to see? Aldi's or anything else that you think we need to try to recruit to Smithfield? National brands I'm talking about. Go ahead, Mr. Cutler. Yes, one minute.
I wouldn't be opposed to an Aldi's coming into the district, you know, which encompasses our other shopping opportunities. I think the citizens have been pretty clear in the comprehensive plan that they would like more retail and activity space. So I think that, you know, and it talks about third places to go, so I think the objective in that plan of expanding into South Church Street for retail businesses, I would prefer to see local small businesses go in those locations, but out where our other national chain businesses perhaps would be appropriate for that. But I personally would be very happy to see some entertainment or other small business retail places or small business restaurants expand out into the town.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Mr. Gibbs?
I think we have Kroger's and Food Lion that are grocery stores that are here. I would like to see a Good Steak House so I can go get some good steak and potatoes. Maybe a Ruth Chris or something along those lines.
Ruth Chris, all right. Mr. Harris?
Another Dagum Alliance. I could go for steak and a baked potato right now. I've had a number of conversations with a number of members of town council about filling up the space on South Church. The comprehensive plan addresses it. We heard a lot of discussion about it. It is past time for us to look down the road into the future and begin to really work at attracting more small businesses, more amenities, in response to what the citizens want. I don't know enough about Aldi's to know whether that's a store that I would like to have here. I'm getting the spousal nod, so apparently, apparently it's an okay store. But, you know, any opportunity to expand and increase competition is better for the citizens, and any business that comes in and provides jobs for the folks that live here is also something that is desirable.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Smith? Aldi's specifically, or any other national brands you'd like to see come to Smithfield?
National brands, I often think about other communities I visit all the time, and we always call it, well, I'm in French Fry Lane now, so, and that seems to be the consensus with every town it grows. You have the big brand companies come in and set up or remodel or whatever they wanna do. But I think there is a place for that, but I do really like to see smaller businesses and mom and pop, if you will. I know there's some businesses outside of town that could benefit from that also in the county. So we're not gonna stop the big brands because they look for rooftops and we're getting them. So it's gonna happen eventually. We'll have to deal with it when it comes forward.
Mr. Biebermeyer?
I don't have any specific national places. Honestly, I prefer the smaller places that we have in Smithfield, the smaller businesses. I think we have a lot of creativity with our local entrepreneurs, and I would like to see us make sure that we support them and support with fewer regulations, fewer costs, simplifying our regulations so we can support the smaller businesses and expanding their viewpoints and their places. So I don't have any, I know people have their favorites, Aldi's, Chick-fil-A, all that. I'm not tied to any single one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Biebermeyer. Mr. Cutler, did you answer this?
Not yet.
I've lost track. You did answer this one?
No, not yet, no.
All right.
No, I have not.
Oh, you have? Okay, go ahead.
Darren started. I like Aldi's, been there. I don't have a preference whether they come to Smithfield or not. I'd like to know if there's a need and then possibly. I do like Chick-fil-A's, I like Wawa's. But I like, I like the idea of the small town feel, the boutiques. My son is a brewer, so I'm into, I love breweries, dog-friendly, kid-friendly breweries. I would love to see some of these small ones come into town and bring in more of that small town feel that we all like, other than national chains.
Very good. Gosh, time flies. We're gonna have to move to closing statements at this time. Just throw out, cause maybe y'all could work, some of these are pretty broad, maybe you could work some thoughts into your closing statements. Citizen asks about your education and/or experience that makes you qualified for this job. That would be conducive to mentioning in your closing statement. Transparency, that's been talked about a lot tonight. What would you do to make town government more transparent? Anyway, a couple of things to think about as you all work on your closing statement. So, two minutes each, and we are going to start with Mr. Harris.
Well, a closing statement. I think it's been about 30 years since Marion, Billy and I moved to Smithfield, and we came here intentionally. As many of the folks at the table have said, we had a background of a smaller town, a real community sense, a community spirit. It's what drew us here. I believe it's very important for us to do everything we can to maintain that. One of the big attractions for me in Smithfield is that we are a blended community. We are blended demographically, architecturally, religiously. We come from lots of different walks of life, and one of the joys in walking around Smithfield is interacting with people of different backgrounds and different appreciations. But all of us seem to have a love of the town, and we need to make sure that that is a paramount concern. seem to have a love of the town, and we need to make sure that that is a paramount concern for every action that the Town Council takes. I believe that it is far past time for Town Council to look deeply into the future, be proactive, set goals, and do all the things necessary to accomplish those goals. Times change rapidly, and a lot of things fell on recent Town Councils sort of out of the blue, and doing things like they were done in the past when demands weren't so important and decisions were so impactful has really become quite different. I would like to bring a fresh view, a different energy, and a willingness to build consensus in the decisions that we make. As most of you know, I'm running unopposed. I would really like your vote, but more importantly, I would hope that you would join me in voting for Mr. Cutler, Mrs. Biebermeyer, Mr. Smith, so that our alliance, if you will, can bring what we believe is a very needed change. Thank you for your attention this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next closing statement will come from Councilman Raydard Gibbs.
I'm a proud graduate of Old Dominion University School of Nursing. I was asked a question, and I want to phrase it just right, from a gentleman, and I found this question kind of upsetting. He asked me, and I want to use the right vernacular, "Why did you move to my hood?" I was offended by that. "Why did you move to my hood?" He didn't know me. He said, "Every opportunity I get, I throw mud on your name. Never took the opportunity to get to know me. But I want to answer that question tonight. Why did I move to your hood or your neighborhood?" I found out I moved here actually five years before he did. So my question is, "Why did you move to my neighborhood?" Because you wanted the same thing that I wanted. You wanted a town with small-town feel, with the possibility of doing greater things. So, if elected, I want to keep that small-town feel. I wanted to make the feel just like I was walking down Sumter 27 in Cuba, Alabama, that small-town feel, whether it's a Mercantile, a Purple Cow. I can go by my brother's house and sit on his front porch and drink mint julep. That's what I want. I like Smithfield. I like going downtown and eating ice cream and having my daughters and going to concerts. If elected, will Smithfield grow? It has to happen. Only thing we can do? We can control it. So if elected, we'll keep that small-town feel, and I promise to serve you with transparency, honesty, and integrity, and ask you to elect my final, my good friend, Jim Collins, Town Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Next closing statement will come from Councilman Michael Smith.
Thank you, Steve. After college, I moved to Virginia Beach, and there was 100,000 people there at the time. This is back in the mid-'70s. And they predicted that in 10 years, it would be 300,000. They didn't lie. I moved away from there. I moved to Chesapeake. That started growing also. And then I moved back to Smithfield. I stayed here for quite a while, but then I actually opened my business up in Suffolk, right there on the Holloway County line, near Chagertuck. And I've been in business now for 40 years. And when I had the opportunity to come back to Smithfield, I felt like I was at home. I never felt like I was at home in Suffolk or Virginia Beach. I just wasn't comfortable. I didn't even know who my neighbors were. You didn't know anybody. You didn't speak to anybody. And so what I found was, I was finally home, and I feel great being here. I want to continue to try to make Smithfield a better place. Growth is inevitable. We know that. So what I want to see happen is, all of us work together, and I do support all the people that have been endorsed by CRL in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next closing statement will come from Darren Cutler.
All right, good evening. I would like to thank everyone again for coming out tonight. Touch on those couple of thoughts. Discuss my education in the beginning, so I'll discuss experience now. I was a, I have not been a part of town government before. I've been officer of the deck of the submarine and led 140 sailors under the ocean at 1,000 feet. I've been the acting department head for medical during the, on the USS Theodore Roosevelt with 2,300 cases of COVID, and cleaned the ship and got it back to 5,000 healthy sailors as a leader in medical. So I've led some big groups. I've worked with some big groups. How do we make it more transparent? Well, you can vote for myself, Mary Ellen Biebermeyer, Mike Smith, and Bill Harris. I think we've demonstrated some clear distinctions between the candidates tonight. I would contrast, you know, again, as a citizen, speaking out about the experience with Town Council here before you being beaten again, down again by two Town Council members that claim they want dialogue with the citizens. But you've seen, you've seen years of uncontrolled growth. You've seen the lack of transparency by the council. You've seen the deliberations on the money grab. It's time for a change, and you have a choice. I vow to be the speed bump to uncontrolled growth. I will not give away your tax dollars to wealthy developers. I will work to bring transparency to the council. One thing I don't bring, though, is the baggage of personal business interests that could sway my decision-making. And I don't have wealthy relationships with wealthy people of influence in the town that could sway my decision-making. I'm running to be a representative of the citizens of Smithfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Next closing statement is from Councilman Jim Collins.
I've explained at the top my education experience, but it's ever, my education is ever improving, and experience is ever increasing, so that's just an ongoing thing. Transparency. Transparency comes with involvement, understanding the process, understanding the decision process. I don't claim anything about being not transparent, or I am badgered at anybody. Come talk to me. Come find out. Come ask me what I think about this $6 million. I think it's being misrepresented. I will tell you my opinion. I'll explain my mathematical reason why. I just think it's being misrepresented as a tax increase and all this other stuff. My wife and I moved here in 2017 as a retirement home. We built our permanent home here, going to be carried out in a box. I want nothing more than the best for this town. I love the small-town feel. I'm from a place called Tyson's Corner, if you've ever heard of it, up in DC. It's not a small town. It used to be when I was there in the '70s and '80s. It's not anymore. I don't want that. I think that the Smithfield with the proper guidance of, Ray and I, we have common sense approaches. We look into things and we do our homework. We're not a blanket no. You keep saying no to everything, developers and contractors will find different places to go, and this place will with all way. Because if you make it difficult, let me tell you, I'm a contractor, I'm like water. I find the easiest path. And if there's a place for me to go, I'm going to go somewhere. I don't want to bend over and work with everybody, but I do want to make sure I keep an open mind in every decision I have. I do my homework. I analyze it. I always ask what we're doing, why we're doing, how we're going to do it. And if you get to the how, and it starts changing what and why, you've got to be able to change. No to special use permits, no to all this other stuff, no to growth. That is going to get out there. And I am for a more common sense approach to everything, and look at what comes to Town Council. And if you don't want people to move to Smithfield, don't be such a wonderful place to live. So I ask you to please vote for Ray and myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Last closing statement of the evening will come from Mary Ellen Biebermeyer.
Thank you all for coming tonight, and I appreciate your time. And I have to tell you that the reason I decided to run for Town Council is because I love Smithfield. And I will go to the grocery store, I go to the bank, or I go to the library. I always run into people that I know. And what's fun now is I'm running into more people, because I've been meeting so many more people when I'm doing the meet and greets and we're having meetings like this, I'm running into more people that I know. So my commitment is to you, the citizens of Smithfield, that I'm here to represent you. I'm here to listen to you, and that you have a voice on the council. I am not a politician, far from it. I'm learning. I'm always learning, and I will continue to learn. So I think we want to make sure that our town, the Town Council is proactive and not reactive, but I think we do that by listening to each other, forming relationships with each other, and building relationships. That's how we get things done, not only on the council, but in town. So I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your vote, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Biebermeyer. Give all six candidates a round of applause. Thank you all for putting yourselves forth. Very commendable. Thank you to the citizens for coming out tonight. Let me give some more shout-outs. Albert Burkard, stand up, Albert, fearless timekeeper. Carrollton Civic League, show them your props that you brought out. He was prepared to get tough tonight if he had to. He's got a bullhorn, he's got a hard hat, but he didn't need them. So, thank you to that.
Kind of looks like a dunce cap there, Albert.
Steve Clark, Town of Smithfield, thank you for our livestream. Appreciate it. She slipped out, but Amy Novak, who manages this wonderful facility, was really helpful in getting all this set up. Vote, please. You can vote early, as you all know, I think. Many of you probably have. Or you can do it on November 5th. But please, go out and exercise your civic duty. Thanks to all of you for coming out tonight. That concludes our evening.
Mr. Stewart, you've got to recognize our Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor, it did a lot better to sit out there than to be up here. I was just thinking about that earlier. Two years ago, she was sitting right here. So, thank you for coming out. I see the Town Manager, Michael Sollings, in the back, too. Appreciate y'all. Everybody have a good evening. Be safe going home.